Good evening. Good evening. Just a minute. Welcome everyone to our August seventeenth, two thousand twenty Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, thanks everybody in attendance. We're glad you're here safe and sound. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Commissioner Marion will lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Right. Most kind and gracious heavenly father, throughout your blessings tonight on this meeting that we've give us the wisdom and the knowledge to carry out the business of our county. Be with our men and women in uniform today, dear lord. Be with them. Take care of them. They can come back home to their families. Be with our military at home and abroad. Keep our country safe. Be with our government officials. Lead our country. Give them the wisdom and the knowledge. Take us forward. Rest at this time in our country. Be with everyone. Keep everyone safe and healthy. Those who cannot be, take them in your arms and comfort them, dear lord. Again, be with us tonight. Bless us and bless each one of us here. These many blessings, we ask in thy name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda tonight, gentlemen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Marion.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gohens. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We're asked now that we will approve the minutes of July the twentieth, two thousand twenty. And that's up for motion.
Motion.
Motion from Commissioner Gohens.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. We have six bullet points on our consent agenda tonight. Before I ask for a motion, I will ask, is there any questions from the commissioners? Or any concerns before I ask for a motion? On any of them?
Just to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify on the fourth bullet point amendment to the twenty twenty board meeting calendar. We'll only be meeting the third Monday in each month now through December.
That's correct.
First meeting, yes.
Right.
Other months will be the
September, October, November, the third Monday.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Looking for a motion to approve the, all the consent agenda this evening, gentlemen? Motion from Commissioner Gohens.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Okay, our next part on the tonight's meeting is our open forum. It's my understanding we do not have anybody at the service center. Is that correct? Okay. The open forum is an opportunity for citizens to come forward to the podium and address, address the board. Anything that's on your mind pertinent to Surrey County. And we would ask that you would state your name and telephone number. And to keep your remarks or comments in just three to five minutes, if you could, please. So I now declare the open forum to be open and forward.
This is the second part of what I talked about. The last one, I'm gonna take this off so I can breathe. Okay.
Name and number, please.
Name is Simona Creasy. Boy, I should know. It's been addressed and directions and everything's been given to my house, so. Three, three, six, nine, seven, two, eight, five, nine, zero. Between the eleventh and fourteenth of June, two thousand twenty, five elected officials from Surrey County signed a letter developed by the NAACP of Surrey County. The official sign in this letter were Surrey County Board of Commissioners Chairman Larry Johnson, Mount Erie Mayor David Rowe, Dobson Mayor Ricky Drong, Elkin Mayor Sam Bishop, and Pilot Mountain Mayor Evan Cochran. The letter included language asserting the existence of systemic impact of racial injustice and racial inequalities. The letter further committed to the officials to focus on cultural competency, educational training, as well as a review of current hiring practices and ongoing internal reviews. Despite any claims to deny this, these words are taken directly from the document. When read in totality, the letter clearly asserts that systemic racism occurs in Surrey County and throughout America. And the letter alludes to police participation in this systemic problem. These assertions are false and the leftist politically charged response by these officials is appalling. I presented comments on this issue on the twentieth of July to the Surrey County Board of Commissioners and to the Mounery News. And the Mounery News ran an article about these comments a few days later. Following the Mounery News article about my comments, Pilot Mountain Mayor Evan Cochran responded to my comments with a Facebook post and a letter to the editor of the Mounery News. In his response, Mayor Cochran defended his signing of the letter and downplayed the impact of the assertions made in the letter. Mayor Cochran implied or asserted that police supported his position because he had consulted with the police chief of Pilot Mountain. That is one officer who serves his town under his supervision. Cochran downplayed any commitment to the document for the certain he downplayed any commitment the document makes for the county to commit funds. Cochran also glossed over any idea that the letter paints Surrey County citizens as racist. And he further denied that the letter commits county and town governments to provide preferential hiring or benefits to certain groups above and beyond what is already required by state and federal law. Finally, Mayor Cochran asserted that he had consulted his board before signing this letter. If the mayor did consult his board, I would challenge him to provide the public records of this meeting as required under state law. If he consulted more than two members outside the confines of the publicly held meeting with the records, he violated state law. Where are his records supporting his assertions? I doubt he has then because he personally told me in a telephone conversation before he knew that I was bringing this to the public that he had only consulted one board member and the police chief, and the police chief. Again, if a full consultation was done, the mayor should have records, this document of the consultation. As I stated on the twentieth of July at this board's meeting, there is no doubt that individuals in America are racist. If we are honest, we will admit they're racist among all ethnic and racial groups. There is no doubt that individual police officers have committed crimes, but to imply that the majority of officers are guilty by association is dishonest, ridiculous, and dangerous. Most Americans understand the cries of the systemic racism within our country are false and designed to further a political agenda to change America and move it closer to the socialist ideas. Promoted by the Democratic Party, most Americans have long learned how to live in peace and harmony. And one need no further to look than the election of a black president in two thousand and eight and reelection in two thousand and twelve to prove this point. These elections would not have been possible without heavy support from white Americans. Four members of the Surrey County Board have publicly stated, I'm sorry for coughing, I have lung cancer, did not know Commissioner Johnson signed this document. What about the four towns? At least three of the mayors, Rowe from Mount Erie, Drong of Dobson, and Cochran of Pilot Mountain told me they signed this letter without bringing it before the boards they serve. They told me that this before I took this to the public. If they were honest at that time, none of the officials aired this issue in public as it is required by state law and local precedent. If they now assert that they did air this issue, where are the public records to document this? Why are officials afraid to disclose this information? They are either lying about the consultation now or lying about it before this issue aired in public. This letter seems to commit the four major Surrey County towns and entire county government to changes in hiring practices and other administrative changes that could cost the towns and county millions of taxpayer dollars and result in reverse discrimination. Legal protections for minorities are already in place in Surrey County and throughout America. Many of these protections give preferential treatment to minorities in terms of federal jobs, college scholarships, and other government benefits. What more do these officials intend to provide? This letter is based on a false narrative of systemic racial injustice. This letter was signed by weak leaders unwilling to face the tough issues of the day in public with transparency. This letter may cause untold strife and challenges to our county towns and residents. All the elected officials involved should apologize for signing this letter which insults the good people of Surrey County by painting them with a racist label for no other reason than to achieve a leftist political narrative. They should apologize to the police officers for insulting the systemic integrity of those who protect and serve. This is unfair and dangerous for those officers and their families. Any leaders willing to take responsibility for these actions should resign immediately from their offices in public, as public officials. How will the Surrey County board members who have admitted they were not consulted in these response, will the board of the towns provide records documenting legal and transparent procedures? Or will they continue to hide what really happened here? Will all boards hold mayors and Surrey County Commissioner Chairman accountable? The people of Surrey County deserve better from our elected officials. I hope each and every resident of the county will read that letter these officials sign and hold them accountable. And I'm sure that Mr. Johnson's gonna apologize like David Rowe where he apologizes that yet he's not guilty. That's a sorry apology. I hope we get better tonight. So I'll just say these political pandering to the left is appalling and shameful. Now, my question to you is, do you actually believe what's in that letter? I got people watching tonight that wants to know that.
Mrs. Creasy, later on in the meeting, we will be able to speak and I'll answer your question.
Okay.
Next, please. Anyone else? Come to the podium.
Yes, come on up, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, letting us come and speak tonight. My name is Linda Black. I live on Hoosier Road in Pinnacle. My phone number is three, three, six, three, two, five, three, zero, six, eight. I just want to bring to your attention something that has been brought to our attention. We've lived in Shoals now for over twenty years and we have been
Linda, pull that microphone towards your face a little bit.
Can you hear me, Frank? Can you hear me? Well, I can speak up. So I would like to bring to your attention tonight something that's been brought to our attention that's very disturbing to us. As I said earlier, we've lived in Shoals for over twenty years. Love the Yadkin Island Park. Love everything about it. We volunteer at Horn Creek. It's a wonderful area to live in. Lots of people come. They go down to the Yadkin River and they canoe, they fish. Kids used to play in the creek there at the Yadkin Island. Well, all of that has kindly stopped and that's what we want to bring to your attention tonight. Back in two thousand twelve, Matt Windsor came here from the coast to be the park ranger. And at that time, he and I had a long conversation because he came from the coast and he wanted to let the Yadkin Island Park go back to nature. Before that, if you went into the Yadkin Island Park, all that area was mowed. There was families that would literally flock there. And kids would be out there playing. Kids would be in the creek. They would be picnic-ing. There was all the time. I mean, there was just families down there. So Matt decided to let it grow back up to nature. Looks like a jungle. And I spoke to him about that and I said, Matt, that's all well and good at the coast. But it's different here in North Carolina and families are not gonna want their kids to play where everything is grown up and there is the potential for being snake bitten or something else. Well, he had all these good ideas and I gave him benefit of the doubt. And I told him that. Well, he and I had another conversation about three weeks ago. And he informed me at that time that I had a good memory because he had to go back and look at his notes about what we discussed. I told him, I said, I pretty well know what I say when I say it. And I'm gonna tell you, I have been, I am the type person that I step back. I try to look at it from all sides before I come forward. That's what I've done tonight. I have given him benefit of the doubt. I have talked to him. I have listened. And at first, he closed the drive-in portion of Yadkin Island because we had lots of rain. All well and good. They do that. When there's a lot of rain, they close the park to protect it till it dries up. Makes perfect sense. I gave him benefit of the doubt. Then he closed it because of COVID. Okay, I give you benefit of the doubt. But now, we're gonna close it permanently. That park is where my benefit of the doubt stops. That park is there for everybody to enjoy. It is paid for by our tax dollars. Parks are there to be enjoyed. Some of those children that used to play in the creek that can no longer play in the creek because Matt says it destroys the vegetation on the creek banks. That's the only creek that they'll ever see or ever play in. And we're denying them that. There was people that my husband and I met on the trail today. We went down to take pictures and got caught in a rainstorm. And I do apologize upfront because part of the signatures I'm gonna give you tonight, I had to draw them out and make copies. So I do apologize for that. But they were from down on the coast. One of them was actually from San Diego. And they came and I am embarrassed that we have this beautiful place. And even the parking lot on the other side of the split rail fence looks like a jungle. Matt won't even keep it mowed. Now, mind you, he has just gotten a donation from REI for a brand new piece of equipment to keep the trails up. My husband and I went horseback riding last weekend on the trail. There are trees all across that trail, and I'm not talking trees. I'm talking trees. At one section, there is a section of the trail that even hikers have to go across a ditch that's as good as wide from me to you. They're having to go down and up. Well, we're on horses. You think a horse is gonna jump that ditch? So what did I have to do? But the section that they've got roped off as dangerous and you're not supposed to go across it, I had to lift them up and walk across it, taking a chance. He has also just been given the positions to hire four new full-time employees. But we can't mow this area down there and keep it open for the public to enjoy? We have took the Boy Scouts that used to camp out down there once a month, every month, and moved their site to the very top of the hill because supposedly it's flooded down there. I've been there twenty years. I've never known that creek to flood where the Boy Scouts camp was. Matt says he closed it off because cars get stuck in the creek. Well, you know, that's an easy fix. I can tell you right now from helping my husband fix a culvert going across our driveway that's this big around, it leaks in it, that if you pour concrete in there, it'll stop that from cars getting stuck and it won't inhibit the environment. The water will run right across it. So that's an easy fix. And he's got the employees. And I also understand that he's got the funds to do it with. So from the public's viewpoint, it sounds like to me Matt wants to have all of his cake and eat it too and not use any of the resources to keep up this beautiful park that is a part of Shoals. That is a big tourist attraction. He has now sent people from Pilot Mountain Park over to our park to park over here and hike the trails. And when you get over here to hike the trails, it's a jungle. That is embarrassing. That should be embarrassing to each one of y'all sitting here. Not only as a county commissioner, but as the fact that I know that you all have helped him with funds for advertisement for that section of the park. And that's just sad. So we're gonna deny the public access to this park, access to this place that you can actually go down to the river because what it appears to us is that Matt is too lazy to keep it up. So, starting last Friday, well, let me just add this in there. The hikers that are now being sent over here to hike from Pilot Mountain, they are hiking in. Horn Creek is a join to it. Horn Creek closes at five o'clock at night. And we've got hikers coming out of there at seven and eight o'clock at night coming through Horn Creek. That is a liability for Horn Creek because there are animals down there. There are dogs, there are cats, there are sheep, there are goats, there are horses. That is a liability that should not be happening. Now, I know that the park rangers are supposed to come over and open the gates and close the gates. Were the one to equestrian parking lot there, they never closed. So, you know, that makes me wonder if there's not a little laziness there that you don't want your rangers going back and forth to open the gate to. So all of that is real disturbing. So, starting Friday, this past Friday evening, I started a petition. Now, I have done some footwork. I've done some legwork. I've done some Facebook work. I've done some telephone work. And I am very proud of the fact that people has stepped up for this cause and that people is supporting this cause. And I present you, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners, with this petition that I already have from Friday night until today, a hundred and twenty-five signatures to keep this park open, to keep it mowed, and to fix that road so cars can drive in there. You're talking about going against the Disability Act as well because I have talked to people who have taken their elderly parents in there just to be able to hear the river, to see the river, to help them down to it. And you talking about you gotta walk at least a mile and a half to get in there. There is not one physically disabled person that is able to access that park at this point in time. That is wrong. That is just wrong. And I am asking you tonight for an injunction to stop this or at least put a halt to it, have some hearings on it. And let's see what agreements that we can come to and how we can open this park back up so that it benefits everybody. Because that's what parks are there for. Everybody. Children, middle-aged, older folks. Everybody has that right. And that right should not be taken away because one person has decided, whatever it is he's decided, whether it's too much trouble or whatever it is, to lock that gate and leave it locked. So I present to you tonight the petition and the signatures.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
And for your information, later on in the meeting, we'll be discussing this matter. Anyone else?
Yes.
Come to the podium, please.
Gentlemen, is there anybody here from the State Park Rangers? They really don't care, do they?
State your name and telephone number, please.
What?
State your name and telephone.
Frank Handy. Uh, I live at Shoals, uh, I'm about a mile from the park. I've been there for 30 years. I'm like Linda, I'm a volunteer up there at the Horn Creek Farm. And we've had our throat cut up there, we can't volunteer because of the virus. I don't know how you're going to get a virus down in the woods, cutting a tree or clearing a place for a pasture. But that's the way it is. And there, everybody and his brother is using this as an excuse. I'm not, I'm from Raleigh on up, on up to Washington. They're using an excuse to get money, get whatever out of it. And we're, we're not at their mercy. I made a statement on, uh, uh, well, I'll start, okay. I've got three grandchildren, I've got eight grandchildren, I've got three boys, 18, 17, 14. And through the years, I've gone, always gone to Shoals Baptist Church. We went down there, we've had numerous uh, picnics and church outings down there. I've watched them boys when they were that high slide down that creek bank, yet wet and muddy. And they would play all day long, we'd set a fire under those trees. And they still talk about it. I mean, it's just good wholesome country living. And you can't, you can't duplicate that. You can't, you can't get it anywhere. The city people that go up to Pilot Mountain, they would really benefit when they go up there and they hit that gate and they say, we're full. They could say, go down to Yadkin Island Park, we've got that open. If we go canoeing down the river, we've not got a place to get out. The state has got a place uh, at our rat up there on the, at the railroad tracks. They bought a farm out there at the end of the road that John Scott rode. All right, that's great, but they don't allow you to go through it. You've got to stop at the fence. You can't carry a kayak a half a mile. I mean, I could maybe stop in four or five times, but the kids can't. And it's, uh, they say, well, no riding down through there, none. I can appreciate that because people will abuse four-wheelers. They'll abuse anything you've got unless you've got something, a path there for them to stay on. Tell them they can't get off of it, that's fine. But I put a thing in the, uh, on the Facebook the other night. I said, I'm going to go down there, 22nd, next Saturday at 9:00. And I'm going to go in that park and I'm going to go all the way around it, all the way where I want to go. And I just hope they somebody to say something, I'm going to call the media, it better be open. Or we're going to, I'm going to stand there, I've laughed at all these people that are protesting. But maybe that's what it gets, maybe we need to stick a sign up there saying, open our park, our park. We at Shoals may be different, I don't know, but we've got two parks up there. One of them has just been turned over to the county. One of them has been in the county hands for years. They were all built on donations and hard work from the people up there and around in the county. If you'll give Yadkin Island Park to them, it'll be cleaned up pristine in a year's time. You'd be, you'd want to take anybody down there you could. Why can't, why can't they let us do that? I'm willing to sign an affidavit, relinquish all liabilities to the state, to the county, to the whatever. And I'll mow that place every week. I've got a tractor, I've got two mowers, I've got bush hogs, I've got a ground, uh, woods mower. I'll mow it just like you do your yard. And in time, the weeds will go, the grass will come back, you'll have a place to play softball on and baseball, volleyball like we used to 15 years ago. There was a restroom up there, I don't know whether it's still there or not. I've not been down there in a while, I've not, not been in the restroom in years. But I've just been a good while since I've been down there. I used to go down through there riding and cheat, you know? It's a good place to go just to relax, just to look. And as far as the trails go, we've done, we've done everything. The state has furnished us, helped us build trails. They're, they, uh, the people that ride horses have fought for years to go get a trail from Pilot Mountain to, uh, Hang Rock. And they've finally got it, I'm, I'm pretty sure that you can go through there. A lot of people have spent a lot of hours doing that stuff. And we could do the same thing over there. I've got chainsaws, I'm not handicapped. I can go in there and cut a tree out of a, out of a, uh, road or trail. I've been, I've walked all of those trails from every inch of it, from Pilot Mountain down to the river. And it's a beautiful place to go, a place to do. But we've got to do something about it, we're just losing, you're losing a valuable source of advertisement income for, for the county. We've got people, we've got a new development right up there in front of that park, not half-mile from it. There's room for a dozen more houses, it'd be, probably been a dozen houses built up there in the last five years, six years. And I, I didn't realize, living this close, I am embarrassed, I didn't realize what had happened, I've not been down there. And for that, I apologize. But it's going to change one way or another if I stand there and I have to that damn gate every week, every day. That's all, oh, and by the way, on keeping it up, uh, Linda's talking about, I didn't realize they said this, yes. But, uh, in Shoals, there's about, uh, almost a mile of creek or, uh, the same creek that goes through the park, same one. It heads right up there at, at Shoals, about, uh, half-mile, quarter-mile of my house. The state went in there, spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars beautifying the creeks. And it was good, it's nice. I mean, they don't want the animals to get to the creek to drink out of. Which I was raised on a farm and I don't know, the cow probably dropped it right up there and I drunk out of it right down there. I'm still living, I'm not, not sick. And I don't know why these people worry about that so much, but they got that, they, they tried to change the course of the creek and it looked beautiful when they get through, when they got through. I went down there and I was, they had, they cut up, oh, a ton of trees. I mean, they destroyed it, destroyed a bunch of them. And they did the same thing down there on that park along that river. It was to beautify the banks and all that stuff. Well, that's great. Up there, they built waterfalls with logs. I mean, it looks beautiful. They put fences up on each side, you can't get in there to it, the farmers can get to it. Looks good. When it rained about three weeks ago, it cleaned most of it out. And I'd say it probably got the rest of it this week. And so it's just, it's, uh, it's, it's spent, they could have took that money and paved that road from the highway all the way to the river, made a turnaround, put a picnic area down there for 10th of money, of probably 20th of the money they spent up there. And, um, I don't, how are you going to keep deers and stuff out of the creek? I mean, they use a bathroom just like everything else, or just like a little cow. Surry County's got the most deer population per acre than any place in North Carolina. That's, it's, uh, we're doing a lot of useless stuff to get around it. Everybody wants their fingers in the pie. I want my fingers in the pie now, I want the park, morning oak. That's all I've got to say, but I'm, I'm going to be down there Saturday. If anyone wants to come with me, bring a sign. I'll get the newspaper or whatever. But we'll make them regret it, one way or another, if they can protest, uh, whatever we can protest. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Emily Grogan. And my phone number is 336- G R O G A N, I also live in Shoals. Um, I've lived there about 37 years now. I have worked with the park system for almost 45 years. Pilot Mountain State Park, Hanging Rock State Park, both. And I've worked on the trail between the two for ever and eternity. And you can't go all the way through the trail right now because we have some, um, land that has been taken back by new owners that don't share our vision of a trail going through their land right now. But that'll be worked out. I'm here tonight to talk about this park. We have a group called the Friends of the Sawtown Mountain. That is a friends group of the parks. Their mission is to help Pilot Mountain State Park and help Hanging Rock State Park and the trail in between, which would be Sawtown Trail. This group has 200-plus members. They are very financially well-off. They own their own Bobcat. They are who Matt calls and who Robin calls, Superintendent at Hanging Rock State Park. That's who they call when they need help maintaining a trail. It's not like they don't have somebody to call. So if Matt has a problem with trees down, he has a group to call. Now, I'm a member of that group. I'm also a member of the Sawtown Trails. So it's not, I'm not speaking of something I don't know something about. I am speaking of what I know. So I know that the Friends of the Sawtown Mountain have built trails. The trails, the newest trails there were built by that group. And that is what they do. There are a lot of volunteer members who work at both parks. So I do not see, I can't, for the life of me, see why this trail can't be maintained, why this park can't be maintained. I worked with a man called, named Joe Matthews. Joe Matthews is a legend in this part of the country. I worked with him for about 30 years. If it weren't for Joe Matthews, this park wouldn't be a park. Joe lived in East Bend. He maintained the East Bend side of that park all his life. Joe would be livid to know that this, this park is closed. I dare say that man spent more hours on a tractor mowing than most people do in their lifetime. That's how much he believed in the Yadkin Island Park. He kept it up on his side and he even kept it up on our side. So, I feel like we're, we're going backward here, we're not going forward. And it happens that Joe's son is here today, tonight. Would you, would it be a fair question to say, Andy, that your dad would be terribly upset? So, I'm here to say, if, if, if Matt has a problem maintaining that section of the park, there's a solution to that. It's not like there's not a solution. There is a solution. And he's used that group for a number of years now. And they would be the first one who would step up and say, by all means, we will do whatever it takes to get this park back open and maintain it. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your listening. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Colby Brim. My phone number is 336-469-8138. I had not planned on doing this tonight, but it has been brought to my attention, from last Sunday, that the park was closed. Um, I am not from Shoals at the current moment. I lived there for 23 years, got married and moved to Westfield. So, um, I moved to the other side of the county. Um, but last Sunday, um, I decided I was going to take my daughter to Yadkin Island Park. Um, I'm a teacher. And I was like, this is going to be, this is our last day before I go back to work, we're going to go do something fun. Um, so I decided that I was going to take her to somewhere where I used to go when I was a child, um, to the park, we had so much fun. Um, you know, not only is the park over there, there's a old well over there where you can get water, um, and drink out of it. And, um, so I pulled up in my Jeep and here I come, 30 minutes away from home. And that three-year-old little girl back there is so disappointed because this park is closed. We have a creek 20 yards from our house. Not even 20 yards, 20 feet from my back door. I could easily take her there, you know, play in the creek. But because Yadkin Island Park meant so much to me growing up, I wanted to share that with her. I didn't know about the trails until tonight, but there's a portion of the trail, the horse trail, that my brother did his Eagle Scout project on. He, um, put, um, posts with the mileage, mile markers. My parents are in the fire department in Shoals. Um, Johnny's, Johnny's back there. And, you know, the park had these restrictions, the state had these, these restrictions on how big these posts had to be. They had to be natural. We were going to spend our money, my parents were going to spend their money on these nice granite posts that would be there forever. Well, they wanted it to be natural and to be kept up. And so we had to get these wooden post markers. So there's so much, there's so much more than just, you know, here in Shoals. I mean, it's affecting all these little kids. Um, I could, you know, I could do a virtual meeting from down there and do some science, you know, for my kids because obviously in the times that we're living in, we're doing remote learning and I can easily go remote from down there. Um, so I just wanted to come and say that I really hope that you guys will help put forth the effort of getting the park back open because it truly, truly means a lot to Shoals. It means a lot to Surry County. So I just, I say thank you and please just do your best. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you. My name is Brian Fannin. I'm the Yadkin Riverkeeper. And my number is 828-964-0353. Yeah, it's not local, it's Boone, but I grew up on Red Brush Road. Probably you know where that is, some of y'all probably had my dad for science and alligator at, um, Mount Erie High School a few years ago. 45 years later and a few miles, I end up now living about 20 minutes south of the park and come up on a pretty regular basis. And I was made aware of this situation as it started developing a few weeks ago. As Yadkin Riverkeeper, I want to say we acknowledge the need to protect the tributaries, to protect all waters of the Yadkin Basin. They're all important, big, little, doesn't matter. So we understand that and respect that need in that aspect. But on the other hand, we also try to promote river access, the ability to get to and enjoy the Yadkin River. I've been down through that section quite a few times. Um, I've had some pretty good spills on the air rat right up above there, too. Nice to have a place to get out. Yes, there's an access, you know, 10 minutes by canoe across the river. But if you want to drive it, it's going to run you close to 30 minutes to get over there. So we, uh, would really rather see a situation that address- So we would really rather see a situation that addresses this in both ways. Yes, protect the tributaries, protect the streams, but yes, also to keep that access available. Um, a lot of our parks have been hit really hard during the, um, the late unpleasantness, the upheaval. I was planning to go camp at Pilot Mountain this summer. Those plans got changed, as did a lot of people's and a lot of parks. Blue Ridge Parkway had temporary closures. The Bull Hole River Park in Kool-Aid is closed until September, October, maybe, maybe beyond that. They were simply being loved to death, they were being destroyed. The, the surge in interest in being outdoors and visiting these parks has created a lot of problems, but we also see the potential for some blessings out of this as people have reconnected with these parks. And we see an opportunity that will take planning and probably some creative planning to hold on to some of that surge of interest in our parks and some of that support. And we would like to see a way to, to hold on to that interest rather than permanent closures, which could actually lead us coming out of this situation with less interest and less support than before. So we want to acknowledge it is a difficult situation, but we think that there are better choices than a complete and permanent closure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for open forum? Casey, last chance this evening to speak. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participating in the open forum. I'll go ahead and declare the open forum to be closed. We'll move right on. Is, is Penny here? Virtual, okay. Penny Harrison is our tax administrator.
Hey, how you doing? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Penny, but we can't see you. We don't, are we gonna get to see you? Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, um, you should have in your packet a copy of the settlement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you should have, you should have the affidavit explaining, um, the two thousand, the balance of the two thousand and nineteen taxes.
Penny, I'll have to get a little closer to the, to the mic or phone, please.
Okay, the balance of the two thousand and nineteen taxes of three hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
I do have that on all of us, yes.
Okay. For real property and then the, uh, personal property of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, um, we have the current settlement for two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty for the charges for current taxes and for prior years. You have a copy of that. And then you have, and then you have the breakdown for prior years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, our ending collection percentage in comparison for last year, for prior year, well, for two thousand and eighteen, we ended very well. For two thousand and nineteen was ninety-eight point six one. And for two thousand and eighteen was ninety-eight point eight three. So it was less than, you know, a quarter of a percent. So I, I thought that was very good, you know, in a pandemic, which we did not do any, uh, bank attachments. We did not do any foreclosures during the pandemic. We only did, um, the debt set off. We only did, you know, the wage garnishment, um, just as little of enforced collections that we had to, to, uh, collect the tax. And so that shows me that the taxpayers really wanted to pay their taxes. We, um, started the debt set off program mid-January. We mailed out five thousand, five hundred and forty-three debt set off letters. And almost twenty-three hundred of those letters where those taxpayers paid their taxes. So that was a huge effort by the citizens of Surrey County. And then thirty-two hundred and forty-eight of those citizens were sent to the debt set off program. And we collected roughly forty-nine thousand dollars from the state for that. So, um, we did, uh, send out, if you'll remember, we, I came to you in the latter part of, well, it was the first part of February, and we sent out the final notice before advertising. I, um, got permission to advertise. We sent out those letters. So I'm really proud of the collection rate. For, you know, ninety-eight point six one, I feel like is very good during, you know, the COVID crisis. Do you have any questions?
Gentlemen. Any questions for Penny? Penny, I understood you to say that the ninety-eight point six one is just a little bit higher than two thousand and nineteen, the collection percentage. Is that correct?
The two thousand and nineteen is actually a little bit lower than last year. And because we, we actually, January sixth, we were ahead of last year. And then when the pandemic hit, that's when our percentage dropped.
And these speakers take us up to June, the last day of June, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, anybody? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, now, ask.
Sure.
Here's a question. Um, the, um, could you give us just a brief, um, update on the status of reevaluation and where that stands?
We are almost complete with revaluation. We, um, are reviewing, um, what is, really what we're reviewing is the Elkin area. We have a few commercial areas that we've got to finish up. Since it is, uh, COVID, we are, um, I'm having a meeting every week with the assessors around the state. And just to make sure that everyone is, uh, on track with the twenty-twenty-one counties, we are going to meet together and make sure that all of the counties are, wanna try to be on track with each other. But, um, Surrey, you know, our, our county is, um, almost complete. But we are gonna try to be in, you know, in compliance with other, other counties throughout the state and try to be comparable. We are just actually reviewing, and we're gonna try to be as fair and equitable across the board.
And we were at a five-year timeline. Well, we've always been on a four-year timeline, um, past when we were on five to get with those other counties. So I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna go back to a four, is, uh?
Yes, that's the plan.
While you do it, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to say that I'm very proud of, um, Surrey County's taxpayers and how seriously they take, um, the obligation to pay their county taxes, in whatever capacity that is. Um, it is quite extraordinary, um, the rate that we do collect. And, um, and, um, we will collect more that, of these outstanding numbers here. Uh, eventually, we always do. And, uh, I think it's, um, exemplary of, um, of our citizens' commitment to, um, their obligation as citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny, I'd like to add also, congratulations. And thank you very much, you and your department, for, uh, for a banner year in, in the work. And I know the revaluation process is, uh, I guess you're glad that it's not a yearly thing. But, uh, looking forward to working, the board's looking forward to working with the, the tax department in the future about the reevaluation. I, I assume we'll probably take it up at the retreat, uh, probably in the winter.
I, actually, we're gonna start that process, uh, next month. You're gonna start getting some schedules next month. So, uh, we have to start it early.
I'm, I'm sure we'll be kept up to date, what's, what's necessary.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you need to report or anything that we should, need to do while you're?
Um, there's some resolution, there's some resolutions that you'll need to sign. Chris and Mr. Chairman, you'll need to sign some things.
The board will need to approve the resolution in your packet provided by Penny.
Right here it is. Gentlemen, you have in front of you, I think it's the back page of her, uh, report to us. A resolution, do we need to read it? Does it need to be read?
Um, I don't believe we have in the past. It's the standard resolution the board considers each year.
Okay. Gentlemen, have you had the opportunity to read or you have any questions concerning the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, um, Ms. Harrison, there, there isn't any changes to the manner of collection and the, um, the process that we've used for the last several years, is that correct?
There has not been any changes. The only thing that, you know, we have used less enforced collection this past year because of the pandemic. But if things, you know, get better, then we plan to go back to business as usual, like foreclosures and things like that. If they, you know, if things get better. Like if COVID goes away and things like that. We've tried to give everyone the opportunity to get back to work and things like that.
You firm over Asheville for that? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have this resolution in front of you, which, uh, enables, uh, Penny Harrison, our tax collector. She authorized her and empower her to do what's necessary in her department. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Surrey County Tax Administrator's resolution, um, and annual statement. And I'm not sure, this might be two different resolutions she needs passed off on in the package. Two different things created for one.
I believe it's just this one.
I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution that the tax director's, uh, request.
I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker. Second, from Commissioner Goins. Any, any more discussion? All in favor of passing this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Penny.
Yes, but that, there's only one resolution in the packet. Is that correct? I got, you have a, you have a resolution and an order. Right, you have a resolution and an order.
Yeah, is it the same? I mean, is that one?
They're two separate documents.
I understand, but does that just require one action?
It required, the resolution requires a single action, the order requires a single action.
Okay, well, we just passed the resolution. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the order of the Board of County Commissioners as presented by the tax collector as well. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Tucker. I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker and a second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes also. Okay, moving on with our agenda, Mark Willis, our Opial Response Director.
Evening, gentlemen. I have two items for your information and one item for your approval this evening. Between March of, uh, twenty nineteen and February of twenty twenty, we had eight public forums. The idea was to educate the, the public on the issues, the difficulties we're having in this county when it comes to substance use. And then, uh, the plan from February was, uh, to graduate based on the comments that came from the Earl Theater Forum that had almost three hundred people in attendance, and some of you were there, too, that we wanted to focus on what are we doing? And what are the things we could be doing rather than focusing on how bad things are? Unfortunately, uh, COVID-nineteen, uh, stomped all over those plans. And in order to adapt, improvise, and overcome, we partnered with the North Carolina Technical Training Assistance Center to create a series of videos specifically for that, uh, will be about fifteen to twenty minutes in duration. And they will involve local citizens who are in recovery from substance use disorder. In addition, local experts and national experts that will, uh, will add to the storyline. And we want to connect those four videos by the stories that come from people in, in recovery. We'll kick off this week with a media campaign that will incorporate a three-and-a-half-minute trailer or what we're calling the Surrey, the Road to Recovery. With your permission, I'd like to show you that trailer this evening to give you an idea of what it's gonna look like. Mr. Wallace? We did test it on us. Uh, in the, in the way of further description, we started at a national view, and, uh, we spent about two hours with Beth Macy, who travels the country, the author of, uh, Dopesick, uh, to get her view on what's been, what, uh, efforts are being taken nationally. Then we went to local experts, Dr. Edsall, talk about, um, what EMS is doing and what the emergency rooms are doing. We talked to local treatment providers, uh, local pastors. And, uh, we've got, um, spouses and brothers and sisters who've, uh, who've been impacted by substance use in their family. Uh, in addition to four individuals who, uh, most of them grew up, three of them grew up, uh, in Surrey County and are living here now. And one works, actually, is my peer support specialist on the intervention team. Uh, and so those interviews will incorporate their stories. Mr. Wallace? Roll that beautiful footage, please. The blips and skips, they're Nathan's fault, they're not mine. We'll release the first of the 20-minute videos probably just after Labor Day and then one video every three weeks after that to conclude the series around early November. Any questions on what we're trying to do there? I will say that Mr. Marion was also interviewed and he did exceptionally well. Thank you. The second item for your information is just something that I thought you needed to know. I'm not going to go over that whole four-page document. That's under the heading of projections for the future state of substance use in our county. I wanted you to know that, yeah, we're hurting. By EMS statistics, we're up 24% for overdose responses compared to 2018, our worst year. But so is everybody else. And I tried to give you an explanation as to why that is. We're suffering largely because, and I went down the list there on page, page three, the bottom of the page, pretty much because of isolation. Even though we have a significant number of treatment providers in the county, they've converted to telehealth because of COVID-19. Global issues involving supply chains is affecting the ability of people to acquire the drugs that they need. They're being told to isolate when being with people is actually part of the treatment and recovery. There's not much we can do, but we are situated with the intervention team. They've done, like I said last month, we've done almost 70 interventions. And that's with the difficulty of connecting with people at their homes. So I think we're prepared to come out of this in a good state. Any questions on this document?
You say that we're prepared to come out of this in a good state. Elaborate on that.
I think, you know, I think we're not we're not using all of our assets and all of our opportunities at intervention where we can. But I think unlike a lot of counties, we've taken significant steps to connect people to treatment. We have six treatment providers in the county that are doing their best despite COVID-19 restrictions. They can't put people in rooms to be able to do counseling sessions. But I think it's difficult to carry on counseling strictly through telephone. A lot of the interventions we're doing are via telephone because it's difficult to connect with people face to face. We are, we're prepared probably for the next two weeks to put one of our peers at Hugh Chatham Hospital. The two ED doctors at the senior doctors at both hospitals are discussing prescribing buprenorphine to overdose victims involved with opioid cases. So I think we're doing a lot of things that many other counties are not. So I think when a lot of the restrictions are released to treatment, we will be prepared to put more people in treatment once we, once the referrals are able to actually face to face pick people up, take them to detox centers and sign them up for treatment.
In your estimation, how many spots do we have available at treatment facilities in the county? And we have what, is it eight or 12 treatment facilities?
No, we've got six that are fully operational. The upside is that if they're fully funded, and that is one of the problems, state funding is limited for people who don't have insurance. But if they're fully funded with Medicaid funds and state funds, we can put over 200 people in treatment. The downside is that's almost entirely intensive outpatient as opposed to residential facility. The only residential facility we have is Hope Valley, which is a 28-day abstinence program right here in Dobson. And they do an excellent job, but their capacity is limited and some people don't respond well to 28-day abstinence programs. So we're missing things like a residential program, extended residential program. And we don't have a 23-hour facility to put people in while we're rating to get them into treatment or before we can get them to an appropriate facility like a detoxification facility, which is typically seven days long. That your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
The last item I have on the agenda is for your approval. I'm proposing to initiate a drug overdose fatality review team, much in the same manner as the child fatality protection team, which is mandated by state law. Since January 1st, 2017, this county has experienced 129 overdose deaths. If you ask me anything more than what's the breakdown of male, female? What were the causes of the overdose deaths? I couldn't answer you. We don't know anything about them. And if we don't know anything more than the drugs and the gender and generally, well, specifically EMS knows, and so does the medical examiner where the deaths occurred, then it's really hard to come up with programs to address those specific needs. In other words, how many were homeless? How many were on probation? How many were out on bond from incarceration? How many were overdoses specifically from polydrug? Deaths, in other words, which drug caused the actual death or had extenuating circumstances involving previous medical conditions? How many had children? How many were married? I don't know. And neither does anyone else. So what I'm proposing is to, and you see the team members there. There's an executive committee that will help me that I'll convene first to help me address any issues that are missing in the charter that I proposed. And then when we're ready and have all the details ironed out, we'd call a full team meeting. Probably about 95% of those team members are the same team members that are on the child fatality prevention team. And this charter's already been given to them for review. All of them said they'd be more than willing to participate in this team. And we would probably just roll the meetings that are handled once per quarter, one after another. That's the general overview. Any questions?
You're finished, I have a comment.
Yes, sir. Unless you've got more questions, that's the quick overview. And I'm, yes, sir.
Overdose deaths. How many are linked to pushers or drug dealers? Have there been any prosecutions?
Good question. That question actually comes with an asterisk. Prior to December 1st, 2019, law enforcement agencies and prosecutors could only utilize North Carolina General Statute 14-17 that involved charging someone with second-degree homicide. In order to prove second-degree homicide, you had to definitively link the drug distributor with the overdose death. And you also had to prove malice. Very difficult to do for a distribution case. As of December 1st of last year, the state legislature passed a new law, 14-18.4, commonly called Death by Distribution. It removed the requirement for investigators to prove malice on the part of the distributor. To answer your question, according to the District Attorney's Office, of those 129 cases or overdose deaths since January 1st, five have been investigated and submitted to the District Attorney's Office and they declined to prosecute for lack of sufficient evidence. And one is presently being evaluated by the prosecutor's office. I think under the new Death by Distribution law submitted to them by the Sheriff's Office. For statistical purposes, we've had 17 overdose deaths since January 1st, 2020.
And that law was passed by the General Assembly, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It was signed by the governor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wonder how that's gonna fare in light of what has transpired since that point in time with the, you know, I would say probably the more lenient tone in drug offenses and all sorts of criminal offenses that we have seen in the last six to eight months in the country. So, yeah, I think it's a good law. You know, it's government only enforces the laws they choose to enforce. And I hope that they prosecute these pushers to the fullest extent of the law. But as I said, the climate for drug prosecutions is deteriorating, it seems to me, in the country, so.
Yes, sir. Did you have a question?
It's not a question. I just, I just thinking back when we decided to really look into this and bring you on as an employee of Surrey County, I remember our words is that, you know, we need to establish a good foundation. And I see that. I see this foundation getting better and better all along. I know you've had a few stumbling blocks, maybe even a wall or two that you can't, you don't have any control over. But I commend you for your efforts and those that work with you. And my hope and prayer that this team, as we're going to call it, will be very beneficial to those that need it. And I want to thank you again for that.
Thank you, sir. Do we, I'm not sure how we want to proceed, sir. Do I ask, take a vote?
I'll make a motion that we approve the drug overdose fatality review team as presented by
That's sufficient?
Yes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gouins and a second from Commissioner Marion regarding this drug overdose facility review team. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also say that I commend Mark Willis for his efforts in this regard, and I think they've been first-rate. This is a very, very challenging topic as we all knew when we entered on this path. And I think it will continue to be somewhat challenging, but I think we do need to, as elected officials, we need to do our very dead-level best to try to mitigate the fallout from the terrible drug problem that we have in this county and and obviously in this nation as well. I think it's the least we can do and I think it's a good expenditure of public monies. And Mr. Willis has secured additional monies at no expense to the taxpayers of Surrey County. And I think everyone is unified in this effort. And it's a terrible crisis that affects all components of our lives and our government. And I think it's, I think it's a good expenditure of resources and I want to thank Mr. Willis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will put you on the spot. Though I did not include a commissioner on this fatality review team. Would one of the commissioners like to participate?
Mr. Chairman, I think that his review team is appropriate. And I think this board has proper oversight. This is not a board that has had a tendency to micromanage affairs in this county. And as the commissioner representative on the opioid response committee, committee, that has been my modus day one. I haven't micromanaged anything. And I think this board has a great deal of confidence in what you've done and a great deal of support. So I think your committee is adequate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll just echo those sentiments and say thank you, Mr. Willis. I remember when you came on board, you and I had a conversation and it was, you know, what are my expectations? What are you expecting, three months, six months, nine months, 12 months? And, you know, I was a little bit embarrassed about my answer, but it was along the lines of, I don't know what your goal and objectives are except to plow into this thing and at least to make an effort. And I think you've done that and I want to commend you for it. We've learned a lot of things along the way. We're still fighting the good fight and I appreciate your leadership as our opioid director. And I think you've done a good job, a real good job. And I just want to chime in and say, I say publicly, I thank you.
Appreciate, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes, then we will turn the time over to Chris Knopf, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a request to amend my agenda. I would like to address the amended amended agenda item first. There was a resolution, a draft resolution that was sent out to you earlier today, and it's also located at each of your seats regarding the Yakon Islands issue. That would require action.
Okay, we need, we need a motion to adjourn the amendment in a second.
Motion to amend the.
Okay. Motion from Commissioner Gouwens. Did I do it right?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and a second from Commissioner Harris. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll read the, if you want me to, I'll read this draft resolution since it's wasn't provided in the packet earlier for public consumption, and then the board can have a discussion about the comments at open forum. So this is a draft resolution. Whereas Pilot Mountain State Park is one of Surrey County's most significant natural resources and tourist destinations, and how the park is managed and accessed has a significant impact on the local economy. And whereas the Bean Shoals access of Pilot Mountain State Park has been a place of enjoyment for approximately fifty years, opening around nineteen seventy, because it provides close vehicular access to the Yakon River for outdoor enthusiasts, families, groups, scouts, and many others. And whereas the Bean Shoals portion of Pilot Mountain State Park is the most significant public access for vehicular traffic to the Yakon River for both residents and tourists alike outside of a couple of paddling accesses along the Yakon River. And whereas over the years, the Bean Shoals access has been a significant source of outdoor recreation and has alleviated overflow crowds from the mountain section of Pilot Mountain State Park. And whereas the tourism, the Surrey County Tourism Development Authority spent significant funds providing wayfinding signage directing vehicular traffic from NC two sixty-eight to Pilot Mountain State Park accesses along the corridor and at Bean Shoals, which were supported and encouraged by state park staff to relieve traffic pressure at the mountain section. And whereas it has come to the attention of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners that the Pilot Mountain State Park Superintendent has requested that the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources permanently close the Bean Shoals access of Pilot Mountain State Park to vehicular traffic. And whereas the fact that a permanent access closure request with significance well beyond the state park has been submitted to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources without any prior discussion by state park staff, the local park users, municipal and county officials, tourism officials, et cetera, is deeply concerning. And whereas the alleged issue that has led to this request deals with certain vehicles having difficulty fording streams along the access road and the impact this has on these natural resources. And whereas if closed to vehicular traffic, visitors would be expected to hike up to one point five to three point four miles to access the Yakon River, campsites, picnic areas, and the historic Bean Shoals Canal over rough, hilly terrain. This change would then especially create a hardship for any typical unhealthy hiker, especially for children, elderly, and disabled visitors, all but ensuring far fewer users of the Bean Shoals access in the future. And whereas local residents are reporting less satisfaction with Pilot Mountain State Park due to increasing efforts to limit access that has been in place since the park's inception, especially since public funds support the existence of Pilot Mountain State Park. And whereas in the opinion of Surrey County, this request is short sighted, considering the information described in this resolution and would create an incredibly negative impact for our residents. Now therefore be it resolved that Surrey County opposes the request of the Pilot Mountain State Park Superintendent to permanently close the Bean Shoals access of Pilot Mountain State Park to vehicular traffic and request that North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources employ a transparent process for making the necessary improvements to the Bean Shoals access road that protects the streams and keeps it keeps it open to vehicular access. This is the seventeenth day of August, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, Mr. Chairman. I will, first off, I want to thank all you folks for coming tonight and speaking up about the potential closure of the Yakon Island section of the Pilot Mountain State Park. I think you are exactly right. Not only is it all those things that you guys talked about, it's a wonderful place to play in the creek and a wonderful place for the scouts and groups and just to get away from it all and drive down. But, you know, the, I think one of the points that I want to make here is it's not like we just have an overgrown park and we're looking for money to repair it. We have had a park, a state park that we're very proud of, not only for our communities surrounding it, but for Surrey County in whole, that is an extension of the world famous Pilot Mountain State Park itself. And when that thing was originally put together, it was in a bipartisan effort in the North Carolina Journal Assembly and by its governor at the time. And it not only encompassed all of the geography of the Pilot Mountain itself, but it holds permanently a corridor. Then the state owns it, yellow signs and all on the borders from there all the way to the Yakon River where there is a famous island called the Big Island. And it's right across the river from East Bend. And in the eighteen twenties, there was a fellow by the last name of Bean who spent a big fortune there, moving rock by hand, because that was before the train came along, and it was everybody's grandiose idea that the Yakon River would be a waterway. A a for merchandise from from maybe Elkin to 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 Donahue to Winston-Salem. And if one would ever take the time to go down there and look at the magnitude of work that was done physically and by hand and the dreams that some fellow had to make that into a canal in a raised water bed with a large dam downstream. It's just absolutely historic. And not only is that Bean Shoals Canal historic, the Big Island right in the middle of that river is one of the places only, one of the only places in that river that you can actually ford the river. You roll your pants up, walk across to the Big Island. I've done it many, many times. And then you can get on the island, you can do whatever you want. You can stay over there a day if you want to, and then you can walk the other stretch of the river all the way to Yakon County. And it's it's just absolutely scenically beautiful. And when the original founders of our state park system took into this notion with the Pilot Mountain, the state park section, it it was, I don't know the acres, but a few hundred acres. It's not just a small place that you can go to the creek. It is nature and its splendor and glory. It's trees that two or three hours can't reach around. It's hundreds of acres. It's, it is absolutely just a a drive through nature. When, before my father passed away recently, every week, just about every week of his life, one of the things we would do would would be to ride that road all the way down to the river. We'd roll the windows down even when he wasn't able to walk down the rest of the stretch. And, you know, you could see the river, you could hear the river, you could get away from nature. What in the world is a park good for if a kid can't can't go and wade in the creek? My goodness. Where else can he wade in the creek? And, you know, if, it's not like we're asking for the state to, hey, give us some money so we can turn this into a state park. We already have a state park, for heaven's sakes, for fifty years. We just happen to have a state park superintendent that seems to have little to no interest in this section of the Pilot Mountain State Park when after many times they have asked us to be a neighbor and a partner as a county and to sell this to the tourist and to the economic interest. And we have, and I don't know, our county manager alluded to it, but I've been told upwards toward thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of signery that this county has just purchased purchased recently, the last couple of years, to put on the sides of the road directing I seventy-seven and I seventy-four traffic down there. And and not only that, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I go up to the Pilot Mountain quite often, and it's got to where it's a chore. There, the line is so long, you can't even get up there. This same Matt Windsor, the superintendent, is talking about a shuttle service where you can't just go any time of the day you want to. But on their terms, you can go and wait in the parking lot and maybe be shuttled up there sometime after a while if they get around to it. So not only is that mountain becoming inaccessible because of overcrowding and because of the restrictions that I've never seen since I've lived here all my life and frequented it many, many times. He now wants to close down the island section of the Pilot Mountain State Park, which was bought fifty years ago. Many donations contributed, even by eminent domain in some stretches of the corridor. It was their blood, sweat, and tears fought and battled to get that a park. And heaven's sakes, there's a lot of people that like to have a state park. We already have one, and we got a man calling for its closure. I'm telling you, no one person and no one superintendent should have that much persuasion and that much power over a state park and over the taxpayers' own park that this county and these communities surround it can now be proud of and enjoy. It's on every tourist map. You, it's on every, it's on every computer site when you start looking, looking about recreation and tourism here in Surrey County. It will cost us, it's hard to, it's hard to really put a figure on it, but it would cost us dearly if we didn't have those visitors here from San Diego and heaven. I I've seen them there from from Japan. I've seen people there that was was touring the eastern part of the United States and saw this on a tourist map and came down and spent a few bucks right here in Surrey County, stayed overnight a few nights to see all of our scenic attractions, including the Shoals Bean Canal and its state park extension of the Pilot Mountain State Park. I think this is a absolute, absolutely, it's detrimental for our county. It goes contrary to any sensible thing that I've ever heard talk about when you talk about enjoying and having a state park. I have been in touch with Representative Sarah Stevens today and expressed these interests. I've been in touch with Representative Kyle Hall. I am about to be in touch with Senator Field Burger, who's also a representative of that area in the North Carolina General Assembly. I want to take this resolution tonight. I'm going to ask the board if they will join me in support. And we're gonna, we're gonna do like an old friend of mine used to say, we're gonna hit the send all button. We want to send it to the governor, to the North Carolina Senate, to the North Carolina House, to everybody in the natural and cultural resources. And we want to bring to their attention that this will be a travesty for our county. And it would be absolutely economically unwise, and it would be such a shame to have a wonderful, beautiful park down there. And you actually, the only way you would have to access it now, if if this park superintendent gets his way, is to park on Hoosier Road and walk three point four miles on a trail that's not even kept up to get to the river. It would be totally useless for a well, well, a healthy person. But for the average elderly citizen, children, children of any age, and for the handicap, it would be hundreds of acres of land that's absolutely out of reach and a destination they could not reach forever. It's a, it's a shame. The state is, the state's already provided it for us. They have a state road going from the hard surface road all the way down to the river. We're just simply asking to keep it alive. Spend a few dollars and some of those new employees resources and clean it up once a month. But for heaven's sakes, don't just use COVID nineteen as an opportunity to not only close it down from March till now, but just say, you know, I want to close this permanently and forever. That's absolutely an overreach for one individual. I think this county board ought to protest it. And I think we ought to send this message of resolution loud and clear to everybody and anybody that'll read it and let them know the magnitude of what's about to happen here if we don't get it stopped. I thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman, and I am going to ask, if I may, that this board join me, and I'm gonna, I guess I'm going to ask for, Mr. Manager, a motion for this board's support of this resolution that's been presented and read here tonight. And if that is applicable to Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like for you to allow me to make that motion that this board, and I hope will unanimously ratify this motion, to send this resolution to Raleigh and all the fires that be.
I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker that we adopt this resolution. I need a second.
Mr. Chairman, as the other commissioner that represents the Yakon River section of this county, I would like to second the great orators from Shoals resolution, and I proudly do that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker and a second from Commissioner Harris. Now we'll open up for any questions or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask Commissioner Tucker. Of course, it's naturally your district, this area. Are we going to do all of these things, get it to all the people? Or are you going to be the main person to make sure it gets to everybody?
By golly, I'll be one of them, I'll tell you that.
Okay, well, that's, I just want to make sure.
And I'm going to ask the county to help me do that. And I'm going to ask our county manager and staff to make sure that when we hit that send all button, that we've sent it to just about all of them.
Good.
I asked a couple of the elected officials today in the North Carolina General Assembly to be on the lookout for it, and they said the more the mayor send it to all of us. And again, I, I'm a little disappointed, and I'll just say this, and I left it off earlier. I'm a little disappointed that something of this magnitude that would impact this county so much, economically, personally, every other way, there's not every county that has a state park. And to have one for fifty years and the state be very content to let us keep it, and all of a sudden, one park ranger just decides we're going to close it. I'll be honest with you, I'm just a little disappointed that we didn't have some public here and some public discussion and some opportunity to make public comment on this before somebody just decided that. So since that didn't happen, we'll just go at it from reverse. We'll just, we'll start our campaign to see if we can bring some attention to this. And I appreciate you fellows in helping me support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say too, in addition to Commissioner Tucker's comments, that as the TDA representative for the Board of Commissioners, this is a very significant, probably the most significant geographical draw to our county from a tourism perspective. It is certainly symbolic of Surrey County, the Pilot Mountain, and all components of it. And we have spent considerable resources on signage promoting the Bean Shoals Canal and the Yakon Island section of that park. I know that park is very important to the community. I know over in my community, you know, although it's not in the county, Stone Mountain is very, very symbolic of our area and very much supported over there. It sounds like to me that, from hearing the public comments tonight, that there is a Shoals war between Shoals and the state of North Carolina imminent. And I think that rightly so. I also want to say this board has always supported our natural resources and our trails and our state parks and our game lands. We have a game lands in Surrey County. And because, one simple reason, we need to do whatever we can to encourage young people to get outdoors and all segments, not only young people, elderly people, people with disabilities, to the extent they can, to enjoy these things, because that's what they are here for, as Commissioner Tucker said. They're here for everyone's benefit, and I am proudly supporting this resolution and these efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is an ambulance franchise hearing, subject to section one one two point oh five of the Surrey County Code of Ordinances. Livestar Emergency Services LLC is requesting an ambulance service franchise. The board is required to hold a hearing, this is not a public hearing, it's just a hearing before the board and the applicant to consider the application. A franchise is awarded by the board, these are for one-year terms. At this time, I ask John Shelton, our EMS director and the representative of Livestar, to come forward and discuss their application with the board.
Thank you, guys, for allowing us to present this to you. As you, as you well know, in July, we discontinued our convalescent services. And we, we brought in one company under franchise, which is Miller Transport Services.
Hey, John, can you speak into the microphone? Thanks.
Thus far, we've run probably twenty-five hundred convalescent type transfers a year. And on the other side of that, with the ALS side that we have, there is that possibility that there will be somewhere around two to three thousand more type transfers that could be done that are at what we call the basic life support level and non-advisance life support. As you've seen in our, our records, we've run about twenty-six thousand requests a year. So far, with Miller, he has not been able to answer all of those calls that are received in a timely manner. So we're requesting to, I contacted Mr. Hoots here about Livestar, which is a basic life support service in Winston-Salem. And they're already working with Forsyth County and some other counties and have an excellent reputation. We've talked quite a bit, haven't we, Mike?
Yes, sir.
And I'm very impressed with his program, and I think he would be a good asset for us up here to assist us in those. us up here to assist us in those basic life support type calls, which are doctor's office trips, routine trips to Winston-Salem, some of those calls that we have at the residence, to different locations for procedures, all of that type activity, to keep the advanced life support units free for emergencies. And we have a lot of those. So I am asking you, if, if we could, to accept his application. And I'd like for Mike to speak for himself, for his company, but we're very impressed with him. We think he would do the county a good job, know a lot of his personnel. He's been in the business for quite a few years. His operations chief was one of the, probably one of the best paramedics that was with Forsyth County, so they, they carry a good reputation in staff. Michael?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board, for accepting our application and considering it. As Mr. Shelton said, we're based out of Forsyth County. We service Forsyth and Stokes. We do that at convalescent as well as 911 level at the BLS service. And we're also servicing Davidson County convalescent. So we handle roughly 22,000 calls a year, and we feel like that we can help out in the area as requested. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
What, what other counties do you serve? I didn't see that. Is it?
We're in Forsyth, Stokes, and Davidson County.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My question, maybe to Chris, it says here that we're required to hold a hearing. Is that what this is?
That's what this is, yes.
Okay, all right.
Part of the meeting, more or less.
Okay, but it doesn't involve any public?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
It's basically a hearing to consider the application.
Well, this question's for both of you, whoever would like to answer. I'm sure with all this paperwork that's already been supplied, and y'all have talked and talked and talked about this, my, my simple question is, is this is going to be a good move for Surrey County in general, and also it's going to be a good move for Livestar?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I think it is.
I mean, we're, we're accepting his fees, or he goes with his fees, but we have, they have been gone over and very conservative or whatever it might be, and all of those things. It's going to be a good fit, is my question.
I think it'll be a very good fit for us. We're trying to answer these calls in a timely manner for our citizens. And, you know, the lack of service that we could provide for them is, is very detrimental in being able to satisfy our citizens in those type requests. So I think this is going to be a good move to bring him in and help us assist with those. And like I said, I think he, he has a, an excellent background and reputation. I think the citizens will be very pleased with his services and the personnel that he has onboard each and every one of those units and what he can provide.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
I'll just mention that the application is complete and meets all the requirements in that section of the Code of Ordinances.
So the motion would be to accept the application?
To issue an ambulance franchise to Livestar for one year.
Okay. Are you prepared?
I'll make the motion that we grant a franchise to Livestar for one year.
That's sufficient?
Yes.
Motion from Commissioner Goins. Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any other discussions or questions? I have one more question. When will this, if we hear in a few, another minute or so, pass this, when will it start?
It, it would be effective the moment you approve it.
Okay.
And I think he's ready to do that.
That's right.
Yes.
Comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any, any opposed? That's unanimous, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item I have, Mr. Chairman, is a memo from Daniel White, Parks and Recreation Director. Daniel's here, I'll ask him to come up to the podium. We've had a number of requests, or he has specifically, from a number of groups showing interest in camping at Fisher River Park. That's, I guess, something new for us, so he would like to discuss that with the board this evening.
Um, thank y'all for, for hearing me tonight, but, so, I don't know whether all of you guys know this or not, but in 2001, May 5th, 2001, 2021 will be the 20th anniversary of Fisher River Park. So we've been providing services for, we've been providing services for, for almost 20 years now, and I've been here for almost 10. And there's been discussion and talk over the years about camping at the park. And prior to my, my tenure here with Surrey County, there has had scouting and different groups has had opportunities to camp at Fisher River Park. And so recently, we had a scout group ask about doing an expo at the park, and then kind of as a reward to the young people, that we're going to teach these outdoor activities, you know, about camping, about first aid, and, and open it up to the public. As a reward to the scouts, they wanted to be able to camp that night after the event. And, and then we've also, we're working with several organizations to try to bring some races, mountain bike races, and, and different opportunities for tourism to Surrey County. And they had also mentioned, you know, the fact that if they could reduce the cost of their participant by allowing some camping, on these larger groups, we would definitely be restrictive on, on the number that could do it, but, and set up some type of reservation opportunity for people to sign up on a first come, first served basis for a limited amount of slots. So, and then the staff has also been batting around the idea of the Great American Outdoor Campout. It's a program that annually you invite the community out and, and everybody camps in the backyard, that kind of thing. We wanted to potentially in the future be able to extend a hand and invite people to spend the night, the amphitheater, you know, do something special for the community. So those are the, the main ideas. And because it hasn't happened in my tenure, I felt like it was important for you guys to, to reevaluate that situation and see if that was something that you wanted to do. I spoke with the Health Department, and their big concern would be facilities onsite, porta-johns, that type of thing, that, that could easily be accessible to the individuals that were camping, so they would utilize them appropriately. And so, you know, that's, because we're not able to respond to this quickly, we've actually, the expo, one of the other park in Mount Airy was able to accommodate them quicker, but they have expressed an interest in having a second one in October, if that was something that you guys saw fit to allow Chris and Sandy and I to, to kind of discern and come up, or even the property committee, the opportunity for people to park it, to camp at the park. So in, in my mind, what, what we're talking about, and tell me if I'm wrong, Chris, is the potential to waive fees for an expo in October if the scouts chose to do it and COVID stuff changes enough to where we can do it. And then the, the second opportunity would be to allow the staff to explore the opportunity for people to camp at Fisher River Park on a limited basis, not more than one or two nights, and it would be a group type thing, so no long-term camping. So those would be the, the two items that I'm addressing the board. Is that? Questions?
I've, I've wanted to.
Yep.
Is there sufficient staffing to, to take care of campers and their needs?
Um, you know, it, it would be something that, especially with these organizations, you know, we're primarily looking at organizations that we would work with them to be responsible for supervision and, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm involved in scouting, I would be probably a part of that. Yeah, yeah. You know, part of, part of that organization. I love to camp, so I wouldn't have a problem spending the night there and, you know, work with local EMS or, you know, the rescue squad to be able to, to make sure that everybody's aware that the scenario is going on and prepare for the situation.
This is limited to tent camping?
Yes, yes, tent camping.
As you just mentioned, in bike races and stuff like that, that's more money coming into Surrey County.
Yes, sir.
If you can accommodate them any more than we, we have already, they're gonna, more people's going to come and they're going to spend more money.
This, this particular race that we're talking to, if, if things go well, has the potential of bringing 600 riders to Fisher River Park. They've already been out, they've already investigated the park. Our facilities can accommodate them. They said that they would do a rake and ride scenario if there was an area that didn't accommodate them, and then they would put it back to, they would put it back to its previous condition. So it is, I think it's a good opportunity, personally.
Are you asking us to approve of the Boy Scouts going in there in October?
Yep. I, I wouldn't set a date just because of the planning process and COVID, but...
You're going to do that, then see how it goes?
Yes, sir.
Before you take any other steps?
Yes, sir.
And then you mentioned waiving the fees for the Boy Scouts?
For the Boy Scouts, yeah.
Where's all these scouts coming from?
They're local, it's Dogwood Council, I mean, district, so it's just, just our district is, is what's been expressed to me.
Right.
Uh, we're not looking at a council-wide campery, we're looking at a district-type I love, I love scouts and camping, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you entertaining additional questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
What about, number one, is, would this camping, would it, I mean, in your estimation, would it inhibit any county citizens or county folks in their normal, everyday use of the park facilities? I mean...
So our recent, the recent investment in trails and stuff, we, we've tried to address that because we have private venues all the time in the amphitheater, for example, you know, the, the Cub Campery or the Day Camp type scenario. So we've added trail that goes all the way around the amphitheater, and we can, we can add barricades potentially. Now, this particular event, the expo, is open to the public, and it is their opportunity to show the public about outdoors and talk about scouting, and they would teach little classes like first aid and, you know, campfire safety, that kind of thing. So it, it would serve as an educational, the particular activity that we're talking about would serve as an educational opportunity for people using the outdoors in Surrey County.
What about, and I don't know if the attorney wants to get in on this or not, but the liability perspective of this, I mean, is, would there be a requirement for liability insurance or some sort of hold harmless waiver or?
Most of the functions that we do, group functions at the park, we require liability.
And that would be applicable here as well?
Yeah, we do a, a certificate of insurance, which we already have one for scouts on hand for, for this year. And then we also do a hold harmless agreement that the organizer signs that holds the county harmless. It's a, that's, those are the main functions of, of what we do to try to protect on any large-scale activity.
You know, I, I think this potentially could be a good thing, you know, if it increases hotel and restaurant participation here in the county from folks that may be from out of county or whatever coming here. And I don't know, are we proposing a trial run here? Would this be called a trial run, or is this carte blanche approval?
Yeah, it would be a trial run, we'll start with the scouts.
For a certain period of time? Would it, would you want to set a time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can start with the scout group, and then if, if the, the cycling group, the mountain bike group continues down the road, I can, I can, if you would allow, talk to the property committee or the, the administration as well, and even if you would prefer, bring it back to you guys. It's just, it can be cumbersome to, to get these activities once they start rolling because sometimes the timeframe of, of getting it...
Yeah, and you know, the, the staffing component, as Commissioner Marion said here, you know, he mentioned that. And, you know, whatever the additional resources that would be required of the county to make these events work, is a little bit of a concern, but, you know, I don't know how you weigh that against the monies that would come into the county. I would imagine that there would be way more spent than what the county would spend. I mean, I don't know that, but I'd feel more comfortable with a set trial run and some very specific language in the resolution or verbiage or whatever it is we're passing here. You know, I, I don't know that you want to come back to the board on every occasion, but, you know, if you, if you want to come back to the board on every occasion, that may be appropriate.
Let's, let's do a trial run, Mr. Chairman, and then get a report on how, what our success rate was.
I'm going to say this, if the Boy Scout thing falls through due to the pandemic, then the next thing would might be your biking or cycling event, I, I would let you, you have one trial run, whoever's first. Would that be a right statement, Daniel?
That, that would be fine with me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm curious, is, is if the county manager has any comments in this regard?
I'm comfortable with a trial run, see how it goes, and then if we feel like it's positive experience, we can develop a policy and bring it back to the board for consideration. I like that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Goins, old scouter?
I'm good, I'm good.
You good with that? Does this need to have proper?
Board action, yes.
Board action?
Make a motion we have a trial run, Fisher River Park camping for the Boy Scouts or either the bike races.
I have a motion from Commissioner Marion, a second from Commissioner Tucker. Any more discussion?
Is that a trial run for a specific, just this one event, or is this, could be multiple events or a...
Yeah.
We're going to allow whoever comes first to be the trial.
Okay, all right.
And they'll report back. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Daniel, you got your trial run.
And then you're okay with waiving the amphitheater fees for the Boy Scouts if that happens in October? Is that a separate?
Separate.
That would be a separate action to be able to waive the fees for, for them?
Just for the Boy Scouts.
Just for the Boy Scouts, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we waive fees for the Boy Scouts for these things, yeah.
Is that all, just amphitheater, which is normally?
Yeah, the amphitheater usually encumbers the bottom portion of the park.
And that's where they're going to camp?
Yeah.
I have a motion from Commissioner Goins, second from Commissioner Johnson, that we waive the fees at the amphitheater when the Boy Scouts come in. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Next item I have, number three on my agenda cover sheet, I'm pulling that. May bring it back later, may not, but if so, we'll, we'll, we'll seek your approval if necessary. That's the CARES Act, EDA grant application. A next item is a update from county attorney on the Raleigh Avenue property.
Jessica and I showed a building on Raleigh Avenue twice. We have had good interest and enthusiasm from both prospects. The building and the parking lot across the street are being marketed as a package, and we have no offers at this time, but I anticipate that we will have some. And we have no offers at this time, but I anticipate that we will have some.
Thank you. Nice progress.
Yeah, I can't remember if it was at the last meeting or if they've been advised that the parking lot does have a, someone has a, a right to use it and a joint landowner.
The shopping center that is adjacent to that parking lot across the street from the Raleigh Avenue office, it has an easement in favor of the shopping center. So, so whoever buys it is buying it subject to that easement. Originally, EBNT owned the shopping center building and constructed the parking lot. It was gonna be their computer center before they got taken over by Southern National. And so they granted all these cross easements. And then they didn't need the building. And so Burke Robertson acquired the building and the parking lot. And the, he enjoyed the benefit of the easement for the parking lot. And so when we acquired it, we acquired it subject to use by occupants of that shopping center.
In other words, it's useful to park if they need to park there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it's actually first come, first served, really? Is that correct? Do they have a right to reserve parking lot? I mean, parking places? Okay, alright.
And, and basically, I mean, I'm just down the street from them, you know, occupy the parking spaces closest to the building.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Next item is informational. This will be brought back at the September meeting for action, but it's time for the board to consider legislative goals for the next session of the General Assembly in 2021 and 2022. The only one that I received from a department head by the deadline I imposed a week or so back was number two from the tax office. The others are carryovers from last time that I think are still relevant. Uh, as board members, you have the opportunities to submit legislative goals. So if you have any individually that you would like added to this list for the board's consideration at the next meeting, just email me those and I'll get them on there. Any questions?
Is there a limit?
No.
No limit, okay.
And these will be to submit also just a, one more item on this to the Association of County Commissioners. They'll have a legislative goals conference, I imagine. Could be in person, maybe virtually, like last week's conference in January. And then, but we will also submit them to our local delegation, General Assembly directly, in case some of our goals, we feel important, do not make final list to the association. And last item we have is Nathan has a boards and commissions request.
Just one reappointment item from the Board of Health. They would like to reappoint Wade White, who's the engineering member of the Board of Health. Sam Ainge and Imogen Tucker would like to reappoint him. Would you like to take any action on that?
I would like to go ahead and concur. I'm on the Board of Health also and Mr. White is a valuable board member as an engineer. Nice fella. I'll go ahead and entertain the motion that we reappoint Wade White to serve on the Surrey County Board of Health. Commissioner Tucker, commotion from Commissioner Tucker, second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
Following county commissioners' business, we have a request for closed session for economic development and personnel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we depart from the county manager's agenda, I have a comment there. That CARES Act that is in the packet here about the broadband, you know, I continually get a lot of comments and concerns from people about the lack of broadband in Surrey County. And, you know, I mean, like, well, with the pandemic and all of that and obviously the schools and everybody operating remotely, it seems to be more and more important every day. And, and I think it's an economic driver as well that, for people to come here and for businesses to do business here. And I'm just curious, is that something that may come back to the board or, or what is?
We actually, or I should say, I was thinking about working on, as an economic development project going forward, maybe the county's involvement in getting broadband into some areas where we need it. Private sector isn't necessarily providing it. Statutorily, at least a couple of years ago, county commissioners had the ability to do that if they so choose, chose. I'm not quite sure where, if any of that's changed. Just like any other public utility, you franchise cable television in this county, you have the ability to run water and sewer. Cities and towns in this state can be electric cities. They can provide their own power to their citizens. So it's, it's sort of in that vein. What I would say about, specifically about your question, we have three primary providers in the county. Surrey Communications, who is on a, on a yearly basis plowing fiber throughout the county. You have Spectrum, which is providing high-speed internet over coax. And then you have CenturyLink. And if you have CenturyLink, you probably have what is, I would say, considered the worst internet speeds in the county.
Exactly, yeah.
CenturyLink, and my understanding is probably in a county like ours, isn't gonna make any significant investments in what their infrastructure, well, in the infrastructure they have because of what Spectrum and especially Surrey Communications is doing. But I believe countywide, if you look at what Surrey Communications has done for a rural county, we are actually probably pretty highly ranked in North Carolina. I actually got some information today. I'll forward on to you all. But there are areas where there is a lack of service. And that has been an issue over the last six months because of primarily distance learning and people working from home.
Yeah. And, and you know, I didn't want to get into it, I mean, I didn't mean to get into a big discussion about this, but you know, I think it is pretty important. And, and the reason I brought it up is because I know up in Yad Allegheny County, in 2008, 2009, in the financial panic meltdown, they received, I think it was called stimulus money or something, but you know, it was all federal money. But basically, the entirety of Allegheny County in the most remote places that you can ever imagine have high-speed internet. It's remarkable what, what they did with that money from the federal government.
I think it would be smart for the county to find a way to partner, at least with those providers in the county on the private side that are, have done a good job on their own. To find a way to, for lack of a better term, subsidize their ability to go into areas that wouldn't be as profitable on their own. To get it to where there are customers.
Okay.
You know, that's just something we need to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna, interestingly enough, I had a call about that this week. It was exactly along those lines. I get them almost every week. And I was told that maybe even out in your neck of the woods, Surrey Telephone is gonna run fiber optic at the beginning of next year.
No, in the areas around Pilot Mountain, I believe later this year, there will be customers who will have access to fiber to the home.
Yeah.
Outside the city limits. Whether that's my road, I, you know.
I don't know. I've just heard that, I've just heard it around me. They're coming our way, so.
I'm on CenturyLink, so there you go.
Okay.
Is close to Pilot Mountain include Sheep Farm Road?
Well, kind of back to this particular thing, the reason it was in the packet, we have asked, we, staff had asked Surrey Communications a year, two years ago to run fiber to the airport now that it's part of the county government structure. Spectrum is the provider of good internet service, but for just peace of mind, our network's on Surrey Communications. They had budgeted 25,000 to do it. They were gonna do it even though there was only one customer that was really gonna benefit them. And they may pick up other customers, but Spectrum's already, they already have a foothold and they provide a good service. I think what they're trying to do is sort of leverage more money so they could do some other projects that are more worthy. And they were hoping maybe we could work together where they could apply for some CARES Act funds to do that. What I suggested to them was we could, we could continue to wait, but they should probably take those funds and put them into some projects in the county where they have other needs. And we would reevaluate it. I think maybe it would be fair next year for the Airport Authority, I say next calendar year, if the budget's looking healthy, for the Airport Authority to consider maybe splitting that cost with them since they are doing it on our behalf.
You know, Surrey Telephone can run high-speed internet to CenturyLink territory.
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing. And I think that's almost on the flip side of that. That's why CenturyLink is not making any investments in the fees they're providing.
Right.
At least here in Surrey County. They are elsewhere, but not here.
And I, you know, I commend Surrey Telephone for what they've done because if we didn't have them, I'm in agreement, we wouldn't have much at all, really.
Absolutely.
I mean.
They have fiber optic all over my rural neck of the woods. If it wasn't for them, we'd have nothing.
We'd have nothing. And so it, it's pretty important because I get a lot of comments on this. So, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Is, is that something we need to talk more about at another meeting soon?
I think with COVID-19, it was just something that kind of failed the back burner for me, but I think it's something we need to look at. I think we need to involve the partnership and municipalities and have a, a plan countywide.
Okay.
Just like we would invest in water and sewer lines for certain areas, I think we should invest in something like this.
Okay, now's the time for county commissioners to, if we have any county business to take care of or any questions or statements or anything like that. And I'd like to be first, if it's okay with the gentleman. A little over two months ago, I was contacted by the president of the Surrey County NAACP by telephone. And we talked just for a few minutes. We agreed that what happened in Minnesota was distasteful and we, we would hate to see that done anywhere. We also agreed, and through his voice, through his own voice, saying, we don't have that problem in Surrey County. That one statement. And I said amen to that. And if I ain't mistaken, the matter in use printed that one sentence on June the 17th, I believe. Also in that statement that he said, it, wouldn't it be nice if the leaders, elected leaders of Surrey County, that we all just sit down and talk? Period. I thought, I've never sat down, other than our elected officials meetings that we used to have. This year, we're not getting to have them, but we'd get to meet with the mayors and others, the judges and our state reps and everything, our elected officials that we, we tried to have a few times a year, but that's, that was all canceled. And I thought, well, you know what? That's a good idea too. So that was the gist of the conversation. Simply saying that we, we recognize problems elsewhere. We don't have any reported in Surrey County. And that it would be, I, my words was maybe a little preventive maintenance if we did sit down and, and discuss with. So that was the gist of a conversation. I personally signed that based on the intent of it. Some said I got duped, some say, but the one thing I did do bad, real bad mistake, was to not confer with any of these gentlemen on the board. I have talked to every one of them individually and I have apologized for my mistake. And I'll learn from my experiences, even though I'm getting old. I'll learn from my experiences and this was a, became somewhat of a difficult one for me. And so I, I have apologized and, and we, we all agreed that we're gonna move on doing what's best for Surrey County as the Board of Commissioners. I would like, the end of statement there, I would like to say to you that we lost last week a good public servant in Surrey County, Jimmy Miller. I, I visited with his family. They didn't want, the night that he passed away, they called the family in right before the passing and ministered that the family knows. And they went on and had their service, period. Nothing, that, that was it. That's all they wanted done. And, but I did visit with them, didn't know if I'd get to speak to anybody or see anybody, not at their home. And, and I'm glad I did. They shared with me a few things about his desires and how he had a, how good he was with the kids in the county and what all he's done and different things. And, but anyway, I, I just want to say publicly that I have to admire somebody that served for 28 years on this board and it is getting close to half of that. And Van, I hope he don't mind me saying, but Van's been a public servant, serving on boards here in Surrey County for over 30 years. Something I didn't know. And I, I appreciate these gentlemen and looking forward to Mark and Bill serving a good 25 or 30. But Larry, Larry's far from that, but I, I want you to know how much I appreciate Surrey County and its citizens. We're in good shape. This pandemic's taking its toll and we go, we're gonna endure it, we're gonna get through it. But as we look around to others and you see it on the news, we're very fortunate here in Surrey County to have what we got and who we got. And I, I speak for myself, I, I'll promise again that I, 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 I hope I can be a very good steward of the, of this sea. And that's all I have to say, gentlemen. Anybody else wanna have anything to add before we dismiss or, I mean, before we adjourn to closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I concur with you. Jimmy Miller was a great public servant. I enjoyed serving with Jimmy. He had a warm heart, a kind spirit. And he took his job very seriously and 28 years is a long time. And my heart goes out to his family and in this time. And Surrey County is a, a better place for Jimmy Miller's service. Thank you.
I too would like to say, I'd sent the family a card and I really appreciate a person that will serve in this role for 28 years. I appreciate it a lot more now that I've served about five. And that's a lot of trips to adoption. And Jimmy Miller was, was a public servant. I appreciate his service and to the family. I'd like to express our appreciation from this board in memory of Jimmy Miller and what he did for Surrey County and the long service career that he had. I, I just want to commend him for that and say that to the family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion to, we call it dismissed, a closed session? Looking for a motion to go into closed session? Motion to go into closed session from Commissioner Goins. Second from Commissioner Marion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?